We will be taking a break, so you know, after this, we will be taking a break before we get back into the transportation priority letter, Ms. Sveby, just so you're aware. Okay?
Thank you. So I've alerted Ms. Hurley to this, but we have a change in personnel on the panel. Somebody ran into a central jam and the substitute for Darrell Kohler is...
Back there.
Oh, there you are.
Hold on to the chair.
Before I say anything.
Hold on to the chair.
That's Larga Oaks from EA Engineering, Science and Technology. I believe you know the rest of us, with the exception of Mr. Adam Corey. He's the new executive director of environmental health here for us.
Pleased to have him. If you could just throw it for the camera and for the public, we'll go from my left to right. Thank you, Ms. Sveby. Yes.
Hi, Laura Oaks with EA Engineering.
Heather Langford, Public Works Engineering.
Jennifer Albaro, Recycling Coordinator.
Mike Swayby, Public Works.
Good morning. Adam Corey, Department of Public Works, Environmental Health and Services.
Good to have you all here. Thank you very much.
So collectively, we have a presentation we'd like to share with you. I believe you all have a copy of it, and I have a few I can leave on the table if anybody else is interested. We sought to cover all the things that were in the email that Ms. Hurley sent to us, I believe, on July 5th. So...
Copy.
Not in any certain order, other than collectively, it was things, I believe, that were asked about. I started out with a rate history going back as far as I could find records for at Public Works. It went back to 1987. As you can see graphically, there was a pretty stiff climb from 1987 at around $10 a ton for the tipping fee up until, looks like, 1997. But from there out, there was, it's only been nominal changes. So we're looking at a period of about 25 years roughly where it went from $55 to $67 a ton, which it is now. On average, that's less than 1% a year over the 25-year period. And I don't, I'd be surprised if anybody would take exception to the fact that every other expense we have has certainly increased more than 1%. Moving into where we stand with some of the other entities, our peers, I would consider, at least geographically, right now, we're among the lowest. But where we're headed right now, as of January 25th, is going to put us roughly in the middle of the agencies that were selected here. Sussex, which is Delaware Solid Waste Authority, Worcester, Dorchester, Somerset, and then the Midshore Facility. Before this, we had virtually the lowest. And I'll encourage all of you, if you're looking closely at this, to be aware that comparing pricing to peers is really sort of an elusive thing to do in the sense that things are bundled differently, and you're not really looking at apples to apples most times. Even just comparing tipping fee rates, you'll find that there are exclusions and exceptions to certain things that can go in one landfill, but the other landfill has no such exceptions or exclusions. So the best comparison has limitations to it, and I would be remiss if I didn't point that out to you all. Moving into the next slide, I thought it was kind of important that we take a look at what our revenue base is made up of. It looks like Republic is really the biggest customer at around $2.3 million. They make about 7,500 trips a year into our landfill. It's a lot of trips every day. Cash paid at the scale is the second highest at about $1.3 million. That comprises about 31,000 trips in. So we have 31,000 people coming across the scales Monday through Saturday, paying hand over fist cash at the rate of $67 a ton. The other enlightening part of this was to look at the company profiles closely of what we're receiving on the landfill, for instance, CES and Lewis Enterprises. Some are not strictly commercial trash haulers. Some are haulers of other types of disposable items, and we've got a safeguard against the landfill's health and regulatory requirements. Thankfully, we have someone on board now with a great background in that that I'm going to rely on greatly for assistance. But those things are going to be looked at more closely. I realize we have a certain future in January, at least at this point, about what the rate will be for tipping, but we may have a close look at some sort of tiered rate based on what is being disposed of. It may make sense to do that, whether it, whether it's due to more costly handling or more difficult for us to dispose of it, or causes challenges during operations. So those are all things that should really be considered and...
What would this, what would that be specifically? I mean, I know we're not doing it now, but just curious.
Any sort of off all sludge? I mean, I, we have some obligations on that front already that really serve us, for instance, a reciprocal agreement with the city. But, you know, there's probably some new things that have developed in the last couple of years in terms of arrangements that might be good for two organizations, and it could have a coincidence of once. I will say this, just, you know, going down the rabbit hole here for a second, that, that working with sludge, and I know we have a reciprocal agreement with the city, and they are very cooperative with us on it, is difficult operationally on the landfill. It has caused problems with equipment getting stuck, and at some point, it can even be a safety threat. So it's not without limitations, and those are all kinds of things we have to be very conscious of when we make, we're in the market for receiving disposable material. Moving on to the next slide, I thought it important we take a look at the basic cost of operations for the landfills, for the landfill. Over a five-year period, I divided this up into labor and benefits, contractual engineering support, and all other costs. Now, the all other costs, the gray bar obviously is the big one, so I'll, I'll give you some, some highlights about what is contained in those. Those are typically capital, equipment purchases, equipment maintenance, consultant services for the landfill, and provisional escrows that we are required to do on an annual basis for parts of the landfill that we're trying to lay to rest, basically. To date, actually at the end of FY '25, I think we're going to have about $2.6 million escrowed there. But there is a certain percentage requirement that Ms. Owen's a little bit more familiar with than I, but that needs to be escorted every year as, as part of the budget planning process.
Michael?
Have you, how much have we paid in fines? And is there any pending fines now to any state or federal, you know, groups outstanding?
No pending fines now that I know of. Since I've been here, I do recall one that we've paid. It was in the neighborhood of $18,000 or $20,000. It was as a result of a, I believe, either a groundwater or a methane leachate.
Leachate?
No. Was it leachate?
I'm not, I'm...
The testing.
Methane.
Methane. It was the methane testing was submitted out of the cycle.
Are there any outstanding lawsuits or fines or violations that you know of that's going on at the landfill right now?
We have regular visits and a working relationship with MDE. They make them in, and every time they come in, they seek our attention. They don't do it, you know, under the table, so to speak. They get our attention, they conduct a walkthrough with us, they may make some observations. And if, if there's nothing fine worthy, and there isn't, that I've been made aware of, their expectations are that those situations are rectified. You know, if a slope is too steep, if they start to see a leachate seep, things like that, and they, they pretty much can get handled at arm's length. So, but no fines or legal actions I'm aware of.
Yeah.
So as we alluded to in another segment earlier of council, one of the biggest costs of operations is for cover dirt. And, you know, we use Connolly Mill for that right now. There are certain types of dirt there that we needed, certain phases of the landfill operations process. In terms of the value of that dirt, if we didn't have Connolly Mill as an asset, we're looking at anywhere between $800 and $2 million a year over the next 14 years to buy that dirt. And that's just the actual commodity itself. That doesn't include the transportation, the excavation, the movement of it, the storage of it, and so forth. So there's, there's a grid on slide number six with that information on it and a very well-done, courtesy of Ms. Langford, a very well-done projection as to what the value of that dirt will be over the course of the years. Moving into slide seven, there's a reflection of labor and equipment costs to actually collect, deliver, and manage and excavate that. In today's cost, that's a little over $600,000 a year, and that includes things like depreciation on equipment, the labor to operate it, any other thing that's associated with, with using cover dirt and filter. Slide eight is a reflection of tonnage history. There's, there's some interesting factoid-type nuggets I came across in putting this together. First of all, the blue line was a projection done by a former contractor of ours, and it was done, I believe, around 2012. And in reviewing it yesterday, it was a simple 1% escalation a year. And I'll say this about projecting tonnage at a landfill. It's very, very difficult to do. You'd be more successful probably at projecting what change tonnage would be as a result of a legislative change, or as a result of another landfill emerging, or as a result of a hauler shutting down. To say this year, there was 100 tons, so next year, it's going to be 103 tons, well, everybody can run a calculator. And at, at first look, that's what it appears was done when the projection was done. The actual tonnage is the orange line, and I took the liberty of highlighting the area where COVID occurred roughly, where, where it was onset in March of 2020, and then where the declaration was lifted in May of 2023. You can see pretty much in the first third of that period, there was a spike. And I came across another piece of information that I, that I found really interesting. On average, we're about 2.3% a year over the last, say, five or six years with an increase. But globally, solid waste increases 15% a year. Now, if you're at all familiar with, you know, with the economy at the national level, GDP is a common thing that's, that's looked at in terms of judging the success and prosperity of our economy. Well, there is a link between the rate of GDP increase or decrease and the rate of solid waste increase or decrease. One of the significant portions of GDP is consumption. So if the economy's booming and everybody has money in their pocket, and everybody's borrowing money to buy consumer products and so forth, that generates consumption and, and the remnants of it, packaging and discarded old products and batteries and all those kinds of things. So since the world at large is generally at a, at a more aggressive growth rate, if you consider all the nations involved, and we're at a more steady and more modest, you know, that, that accounts for why we're at about 2%. GDP typically grows 3% to 5% in an average economy. So that's coincidental to our, our disposal rate. Things that might spike that, or in some way affect it to go down, are changes, legislative changes. There's one that, you know, we're, we're under right now with regard to the need to test for PFAS in virtually everything, whether it be groundwater, drinking water, soils, leachate. Those things are all underway now in a sort of the data collection phase, and at which time, if there are ever requirements put on treatment to eliminate those, you can expect for certain on the cost side that the costs are going to go up, and I would certainly thereafter affect, expect that to affect what people throw away and how they throw it away. And hopefully, manufacturing keeps up with that and, and comes up with some smart packaging. For the next, for the next slide, slide nine, I will turn the microphone over to Larga.
Thanks, Mike. So I'm just going to go through the current permits and a little overview of the landfill capacity. So the, the two main permits for the landfill consist of the refuse disposal permit, which is set to expire in September of 2025. That permit has a pretty quick renewal process, so we won't look to, to need to start the renewal process until about six months prior to that. That ultimately governs the operation, what's accepted, the monitoring, quite literally most of the aspects of the landfill operations. The air permit is the Part 70 operating permit. It's related to the air emissions. That one expired. It has been renewed application-wise and is currently extended administratively until receipt from the Maryland Department of the Environment. Relation to capacity, as of June 2024, a capacity evaluation was done, which excludes a still potential new cell, Cell 7, which is a final remaining cell to be constructed. The capacity timeline as of June 2024 is estimated at three and a half to four years on the high end. The capacity evaluation utilized the permitted final grading plan, and the solid waste operations, basically, to get that three and a half to, to four years will require some modifications to the haul road for disposal. And then the final cell design, construction, and permitting capacity, as Mike mentioned, MES previously was involved, and they did a capacity evaluation of the landfill inclusive of Cell 7 in August 2023, which identified the remaining life roughly of seven to nine years, which now is of August 2024, is about six to eight years. So...
You state that the Cell 7 is the final remaining cell to be constructed, but in, in the chart referencing life cycles, you talk about a Cell 8 and a Cell 10.
I apologize. I'll clarify, the next cell to be constructed.
Right. If I, if I may, they're, they're not in numerical order. Cell 7 is the last remaining piece of land in the existing landfill footprint. It just happened to be number seven.
Now, when it says soils need, soils need construct Cell 8, you're saying that Cell 8's already been completed?
Cell 8 and 10 were the last two that we have done over the last two years.
Okay. And, but there's still soils that need to be put on top of them, I guess?
Absolutely. Daily. Yes.
All right. Okay. I understand. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. I didn't know the names of the cells.
No, that's okay.
Or the numbers, yeah.
I thought I misspoke after that.
No, thanks. Thanks.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I ask a question about the Part 70 operating permit number? You talk about the administrative extension. Is that good until a certain date? And what exactly do you mean by administrative extension?
So often with the Maryland Department of the Environment, they get behind on processing permit applications, and so what they will do is upon receipt, if it goes past the expiration date of your permit, they will administratively extend it until they issue a new permit. So it should be good until the issuance of a new permit.
Okay.
And we do have acknowledgement from MDE that the application was received in March of '23. So we, we put it in well in advance of the expiration. With that, I'll, I'll turn the microphone over to Jennifer.
Hi.
Hello.
Oh, okay. I guess I am going to be talking about roadside cleanup and...
Jennifer. Pull your mic.
Oops, I'm sorry. Roadside trash cleanup and also our recycling centers. We have, thanks to several individuals, Mark and Bruce and Jeff and Nadine and Jerry and Craig Fons, who's been kind of the spearhead for Salisbury, so far, just this year, have collected 13.44 tons of roadside trash. So I commend all of you who have participated in that, in that. We'll keep that...
My back hurts.
I'm sorry.
My back hurts.
And, and I completely understand. And we'll continue with those, with supplies. I will try and get out there as much as I can, I have in the past, but lately, I've been a little busy with other projects. So we're just moving forward with that, hoping to get into the, to the schools, to talk to them about, you know, getting them involved as well and some other civic organizations, and continue the momentum with that. As far as the MRA survey, as you can tell, those numbers have been in the 50% range at least since 2023. They did drop a little in 2019 and 2020 because of, because of the pandemic. People were throwing things away, of course, because there was no other alternative. And in 2020, we had a chicken litter. That was the first year we got chicken litter totals from the Department of Ag, and they were misquoted. So it made it look like we were much higher in numbers than we actually were. So these figures are all subjective. No business is required to provide those totals to me. I have to basically ask and very nicely beg for them, and that includes some of the big box stores. And what can swing the needle a lot is, for instance, the reason why we're down this year from last year was I didn't get the numbers from the Willard Lumber Yard, which were 13,000 tons of material that were recycled. So when you have to, when you can't get figures from, you know, places that do a lot of recycling, it can definitely affect our totals. But we're, we're up there. There aren't many Maryland counties that are at the 50% mark, so that is a good thing. And we'll continue. All I could ask for, and it's, it's not a state law to require businesses to report. Some counties have laws on the books that require businesses to report, and they also have individuals who are hired by the county to go around and check businesses to make sure they're recycling, and they can find them. So we don't have any of that here, and so it's, it's just a matter of who I can get numbers for every year. Do you want to discuss transfer stations or the numbers of those? I know they've come up in the past.
I can, I can discuss something if you would like for me to.
Sure.
I'm looking at this, I don't know which page it is here, the recycling diversion facts, this page here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm noticing highest locate, you're talking, highest location for glass, Civic Center. Highest location for bi-metal, Civic Center. Highest location for newspapers and magazines, Civic Center. And this isn't on you. I know because it wasn't your, Jennifer, your decision. But we have those three locations, those three items, and we pull the recycling bins from the Civic Center.
I actually sort of did an analysis of the offset among all of the collection locations, and the airport, in some cases, were tripled and quadrupled. So what it looks like, those very commodities that disappeared from the Civic Center because we removed the containers, were sent to the airport.
Well, I understand that. They go somewhere else, but it, it's also inconvenient to the citizens for them to go somewhere else. And somewhere between the people that'll actually drive to the airport and put the things in those bins and the people that won't, that are throwing them out along the road, are not recycling them at all, you know? So when I see, when I was sitting here looking at these numbers, and I see these are the three highest ones, I thought, and the decision was made to pull bins from the Civic Center. So anyway, that was just a statement.
I have one comment. The recycling bins by Salisbury Middle, they're not on this list.
I just...
Oh, you're talking about the Jersey Road location? Yeah, they're, I, yeah, we usually just have those, they're, they're on the 24-hour recycling stations. I don't know if Mike has them on his...
I just picked a couple topic high numbers and so forth. I didn't put everything on here. I just, I just selected some in summary in all the data that I had for all the locations.
You keep data on that?
Yeah. So this is one of the problems we have. You know, there were 11 of these dropped off at the Civic Center a couple of years ago, and it was becoming a trash dump site. I do have pictures of, of, you know, the video of the gentleman who dumped them. They were in two minivans. They had them strapped to the roof. They had them inside the vehicles. There was no opportunity to see license plates for any of that, unfortunately. So, you know, they're obscured by everybody's headlights and taillights. So I have spent hours trying to catch people, and I have in the past. I've taken at least, you know, I'd say six or seven of them to court. I have another upcoming court date in September, so the Sheriff's Department is on board with cracking down on this. But our 24-hour recycling stations are, are our problem. They are inundated with trash. We have a population that's, that's come to the county that doesn't speak English and came from a more Third World type of country, and they don't understand the concept of a landfill or, you know, getting a trash permit. And we are constantly having to deal with the trash that's getting thrown in the bins themselves. So when people are complaining to us about, you know, recycling going on the hill, that's why. We cannot pull maggot-infested bags of food out of our recycling, and I can't imagine that I would want anybody to. So it's, it is a problem. At our manned stations, we don't have that problem at all. It's just at these 24-hour recycling stations. And I think the biggest misconception with people is that you can't use those convenience centers without a trash permit. And I try everywhere I go to remind people that you do not need a household trash permit. Anybody can go in. And it's not just the typical commodities, glass, aluminum, bi-metal, what have you. It is also propane tanks, batteries, clothing, oyster shells, electronics, scrap metal, oil and antifreeze. So they, those convenience centers actually do a better job with recycling than the 24-hour ones do because we don't have the headaches and the contaminants that are coming in.
Would we be better off to eliminate the recycling, 24-hour recycling centers and possibly open up another one or two convenience centers? Would that be an option?
If they were manned, I think they would stay clean. But yeah, we would have to...
Sort of manned and manned by the hour.
Yeah. Yeah, that would eliminate a lot of the garbage. And actually, Somerset County, there, Somerset and I think Worcester don't have unmanned stations for that reason. It may not be Worcester, but anyway, don't quote me on that.
Yeah.
But that's, that's the reason. There is a lot of time and energy and effort spent just trying to keep these, you know, the contaminants out, and we have citizens that are continuously dumping them in, in large quantities.
Got you.
Just, of course, make note, I, I don't know where one goes to recycle batteries. I personally do not know.
Yeah. Any of our convenience centers have a bin for that.
And, and that is in...
All of them, all 11, including the office, too.
And then I guess, you know, I'm, of course, city resident, so we put it out in our container. Of course, you can't put out batteries there or anything like that.
Right.
But I know that all goes to the county. Well, let me back up also. I just do, do think it's important to acknowledge, first of all, you know, we just spent this past weekend picking up trash. This is what we do, you know, as a society. We are a very trashy oriented society in the sense that you can go to Walmart and they still wrap up a banana in cellophane and try to send it out to you, right? You, you order anything off, you know, any of these online, it is, you're drenched in plastic, and plastic does not biodegrade. It photodegrades, which means eventually your grandkids or your great-grandkids will be breathing it in because it just gets smaller and smaller and smaller pieces. So the, as a society, I think we do need to make sure that we are speaking out, and, you know, there's been a couple bills to try to have more producer responsibility or something like that at the General Assembly side of things. But somebody needs to turn off the tap, especially when it comes to plastic, which is arguably not recyclable. If we're only, you know, I don't want to ring that bell too many times, but you all have heard me say that so many times over. Plastic is trash. It is not, is basically not going to be recycled. So I, I also want to say, of course, you know, the, I do want, of course, now, you know, that 15% growth weight, or growth rate of waste, you know, that's, that's incredible. And, and I think it's also to note that when we threw planning and zoning, or when we allow a new fast food restaurant to come in, restaurant, I should say, quotation marks, you know, their business model is built off of trash. You know, places like Market Street Inn or, you know, any of our local restaurants, they actually, they pay somebody to wash dishes and they, you know, but Starbucks, you know, Burger Kings, you name it. Burger Kings, you name it, any of the rest of these, I mean, Chick-fil-A, any of the rest of these, only one that's basically loaded, located on Route 13 is all based off of trash. So they are, they are coming in intentionally with their business model to dump in our area. And that, then that, what, what I see when I walk around my community, of course, is the same trash that we go and then pick up. So as a whole, it would be really great for our county to take a bigger stand to say, you know, because obviously nobody can really, none of us can really do anything about a, a larger system, an macro system. But I do think we need to maybe, maybe that's something that we can bring up to the state as this is an issue that is eventually then, you know, we're not paying the cost now, it's an externality that we're paying at a later date. We will be paying those costs at a later date when we run out of space to be able to put our trash in the ground and pretend it doesn't exist anymore. So one way or another, I would love to see that continue. And so what, but two quick questions there. Anorobic digestion or other kind of things, are there other ways that we're looking at currently for, you know, a, a, a bigger way to try to change or divert what is going into landfill? I know, obviously, it's not just people taking the, you know, the trash that comes into their household and that's what goes into the landfill. It is obviously many things from, you know, sewage, other kind of things can go in there to, I mean, to other really terrible stuff, a lot of things with chemicals. So I guess are we addressing, how are we extending the life of our landfill by, through diversion, anything, any bigger?
Well, there is, you know, there is laws on the books now about food waste, and that is the big push with MDE right now. So at some point, we are going to have to look into figuring out how to do composting for food waste at the landfill. So that's.
To be clear, about 40% of what goes in the landfill is biodegradable, should never be going in there in the first place.
Right. And, and as far as the plastic goes, I agree with you in many ways. Plastic, the majority of it is not a recyclable or a marketable entity or item. But we did make $5,200 on a load of PET that we did sell recently in the last six or nine months. So, so there are markets for ones and twos, there are not markets for the rest. It's the public who is not clear on that. And when you're looking at those little tiny symbols on the bottom of the plastic container, it's, it's, it can be confusing at the, at the least. So most people think if it's plastic, because the plastic industry spends billions on lobbyists and commercials, that it's got to be a recyclable product, and nine times out of 10, it isn't. And we are now consuming a giraffe-sized amount of microplastics a year here in the U.S. thanks to this product. And it is Plan B for the oil companies because they're the ones that produce this stuff, and they're seeing that EVs are becoming more of a thing. So how, how do they keep the financial gain going? Wrap everything in plastic.
I'm just going to jump in and say another thing about the contamination that happens within some of the convenience centers and the recycling centers. Last year, going from January until December, looking at the contaminated items and the plastics that could not be recycled, that totaled almost $62,000 worth of trash. So we're talking, you know, almost 100 tons of just trash that had to go. So when people are, are driving by and saying, you're not recycling, all of this is actually just going to the dump or the landfill. It's contamination, it's not feasible to recycle it, and it's just not the proper material. So it, it, it gives a negative connotation sort of to the public when they see it going up there without understanding why.
Which I think to that point, I'll, last question, Ms. President, you know, I, I would love to see why Comico County take a stand and say, we are not even going to try recycling plastic. And we'll be very clear, because all of our citizens tend to think that that's the thing that they're spending. But we are spending a ton of money in people to go and pick it up to, you know, and it is just a absolute waste. My neighbor across the street just has two buckets and he has nothing, they only, they don't afraid of the water, so they just fill it up with bottles of water, you know? So any, one way or another, we, I think we need to change our narrative that this is, you know, that this is something we need to push back on. But my only other thing that I just want to bring up real quickly was that, as a whole, I do want to say, moving away from the recycling side of things, I've had in the past six months, twice I've been sent, sent pictures of asbestos that has been open and sitting in, on top of the landfill. And I know I brought this up, and I'm really great to hear, I actually had a great conversation recently trying to figure out how we're going to have a, you know, a better path forward with how things go as far as safety and that. But in one of those situations, there was a, an individual so upset, there was a woman who was taking her trash out, and she didn't know she was basically standing on top of open asbestos, and she was pregnant. And, you know, and so rightfully so, someone was concerned, a constituent, so they wanted to bring that up. Obviously, you know, that's a real issue. I don't know how we manage for that or where we put things in as far as the landfill or how we appropriately move around those things. But nonetheless, you know, that is a real concern, and I think we need to be concerned not just for the safety, obviously, of, of the folks that are, that are, you know, that are, that are there as residents, but obviously our staff and, and make sure that thing feels good there. So any kind of change there. I know I've really heard some really great things recently about how that is going to continue to shift and be better, but I think that's warranted and necessary.
We do have requirements with asbestos. It's supposed to be double-bagged with 5ml thickness. It's supposed to be, the bags are supposed to be tied, taped, the information attached to them. So I don't know how that ended up on the landfill.
The vehicle's on the top of it, and they open up.
Oh, well, they are usually buried in a separate location, too. So, yeah.
I have a question, a suggestion, and I'm skipping over that. The education and recycling diversion, where you've been, and you were talking about people that's coming from the third world country. I suggested to the code enforcement officer to do, get a brochure with the Creole or Hispanic wording, so they would know they couldn't have 20 people in the house. Certain things they need to do for the housing. You maybe could flip that over and let the Hispanic, the Haitian community know, and this Hispanic community, that these recycling locations are not for their trash. And you have Reverend Toussaint, and you have two other organizations that do work with the Haitian community, and I forget the one that's working for the Hispanic community. But they may know someone. I know they have a Hispanic church in my neighborhood, but you might need to get that information in their language to educate them. And I would start with their churches, some kind of way, get that information out to their churches. I know there's, first, Bob Lawrence has a Haitian church, and then it's, went on Jersey Road right near the recycling bin.
Okay.
So that's what I mean, and I'm going to mention it to the city also.
Yeah, and I.
And if y'all could work together, because I know doing things like that might cost money, you know what I mean? You don't have to do nothing glossy.
Well.
But make sure you have something in their language.
Right.
Because like they have 20 cars in their yard, because they were sending them over to Haiti and, and all that kind of stuff. But they need to know the rules and regulations when they come here.
Right. Well, and I have reached out to that community, and I, I've tried a couple of times unsuccessfully, but I'll continue. And I do have, you know, presentations that I give regularly to, you know, all kinds of groups that would work. But yeah, I do need an interpreter. I do not speak.
That's why I said, just give it to the pastor.
Exactly.
You know, maybe he could, maybe you could come visit the church, because I've done that before and I was running for office.
Yes, absolutely.
And they would interpret what, what you write down and just introduce you, you know, so he would know who to contact.
Definitely.
Yeah.
I would like to also add some of what Joe had said. I think when, when, when we decided to, or when it was decided to remove the recycling station, especially from Civic Center, I got a lot of calls on that. People were just absolutely shocked, and it came as a surprise. And we did have a meeting here, a work session with the council, and part of that work session, we had suggested, I think the council was sort of in consensus that we wouldn't have any problem at all if you were to fund for an individual to sit out there at the landfill at that particular, I mean, at that particular recycling station and monitor what was going on. We'd be quite okay with that. I think what Joe suggested is that instead of making it a 24-hour, my God, you know, you don't have to do that. Just, you know, make it an eight to five or whatever you might do. People will learn to adapt to that. But the baby was thrown out with the bathwater when you just picked him up and threw, you know, and, and got rid of him. And, and one of the busiest recycling stations in, in Wycomico County. Those mattresses that you have pictures of, okay, those mattresses aren't going to go to the recycling station, something Joe said even back then, months ago. Those mattresses are going to be out on Rockawalkin Road. So we need to try to see what we can do to control it. I think just shutting down the recycling, the recycling station wasn't that, wasn't the issue. I think the unfortunate thing you're going to get, I don't have the statistics, but I guarantee you probably 50%, if not 80% of that recycled material is now at the landfill because it went in somebody's trash can as opposed to being in the recycling. I don't recycle anymore. I really hate that because we were doing it, we were, we were methodically making sure that we did it right every single week. And now it's just, it's so much of an inconvenience is that we're not doing it. And I think there's a lot of citizens that are in that same thing. I just think you could bring back, especially in the Civic Center, find another location, maybe. Maybe you don't want it out there on the corner, put it in another area close to there. But put fences up around it, and if you want to, if you want to hire someone, I think the council is willing to, to absorb that expense.
Yeah, and we would certainly look into that. We've looked into it when Avery Street closed, when Fruitland closed. You know, we've had several of them, you know, the one up by Walmart became Sam's Club, and then they pushed us out. And typically, it's because of the amount of trash and the abuse that they take. So we would have to find a location where we could fence it in so you could close it off and, and have an attendant there. So, yeah, we're, we're not opposed to that if, if we can find a location, you know, that everybody, you know, is happy with and that we can work with as well.
Good. Maybe something you can consider, Ms. Sfaby, in your 2026 budget.
Sure. Yes, Jeff.
Tires. One of the things we pick a lot up is tires, but for the public, they're allowed to bring two tires? Is that right?
They, they can bring up to 10.
10?
They're, they're $2 for off the rim, $5 for on, anything over 10, then you pay the, the bulk rate. And, you know, even when it's only $2 a tire, we still, you know, they'll chuck them off in the woods. When, when no one's around, people feel comfortable with doing things that aren't necessarily great for the environment or other people's neighborhoods.
I understand tires were part of the problem of Route 13 flooding.
And they're flooding, yeah.
They got caught in the over, and that was one of the problems down there. So, thank you.
Joe.
Rumors, you know, they, you know, they're like, they're everywhere. And I know that you've lost a lot of employees lately, a lot of dissatisfaction, either county roads or the landfill. Has there been any discussion about privatizing the landfill?
I'm aware of, no, sir.
None whatsoever?
No.
Okay. How about county roads? County roads.
Privatizing the roads makes.
Privatizing county roads, has there been any discussion about that?
Not that I'm aware of, sir.
Okay. This involves nobody sitting at your table because it predates you, but I want to go through a little history here, and I'll be quick. The landfill has been kind of a source of, I don't know what you want to call it, problems over the years. Not long after I got elected, John got elected, we had a big issue there with theft. You've probably all heard about that. I remember one of the statements made by the fraud auditor said if the county took as good a care of the records, took, kept as good of records as the person that was stealing from you, you never got stolen from. Very interesting statement, and that puts a lot of responsibility on you guys, and I think you're doing a good job, and I hope, I hope it continues. Not long after that, even with that happening, we borrowed money from the county, the landfill to balance our budget. Landfill was doing that well, that, you know, we had money that we, I don't know just exactly what year that was, but, you know, so anyway. Then another snafu, I guess you can call it, one of our county executives, and I really wanted to bring this out, came to us and wanted to give a discount to one of the haulers in the county, and the council said no. And by golly, we found out a few weeks later that he was doing it anyway. They give the discount anyway. And the unfortunate thing about that was the council didn't have the power to try to go after retrieving that money. That was up to the county executive, and they chose not to do that. So you got a big responsibility out there. I know there's a lot of cash handled. It's very difficult to keep track of, and I hope you all really keep track of what's going on. We don't want to see what's happened out there before. So anyway, thank you.
Sir. If you, if you don't mind, Councilman, I'd just like to tell, comment on two things about what you referred to. That, that history did precede all of us probably, but we've heard plenty about it. Two things we've taken steps on. One is, I believe the county executive had an outside auditor come in and do an overall review, and one of the things they looked closely at was the inventory handling systems, both at roads and at the landfill. And we took the observations very much to heart and consulted with our own finance department, and we've made some big improvements in that area. Also, and I don't know if it was as a direct result of, of the stealing that was going on at the landfill, but the cash handling procedures, just even in the last three months, have been dramatically changed, and we do everything we can to handle as little cash as possible out there. We have, we have a courier available where we can do deposits, so we're not sitting on money because we can't get somebody to run to the bank kind of thing. We've virtually eliminated petty cash at all out there. So by use of, you know, the P card and so forth and the purchase order system. So we have taken some, some pretty healthy steps toward accountability and, and keeping things transparent and honest.
Do you take credit cards for tipping fees?
We do.
Yeah, okay.
I just want to say one, one more thing to piggyback off of that. When, when I was in, in the, in the station where they're, they're taking the funds and the, and the cash, they were not ever counting it at the end of the day. So we put a system in where they have to go in, count it in the morning, count it at night, see where there's a difference. So that has also been implemented into the scale house as well. And then each night, the receipts, the counts go in there, and then it's, it's stored. And then, again, like he says, it's, it's taken away, so.
Do you have any outstanding balances or any companies owe you money?
I think there, you know, pretty routinely, unfortunately, there's, there's somebody we're usually chasing, but there's a pretty sophisticated procedure in advance to either garnish letters of credit or bonds from those companies. Letters of credit are a little bit easier and more solvent for us to, to, to chase after. But we do, we do have history with that.
And Patsy, who handles those funds, will, we can cut them off at the scale house so they can't use it or, you know, dump trash. And once they know that, usually they come across the street and we have a check. So that, that usually stops any issues with funds not coming in or, or businesses not, you know, paying for using a landfill.
Yeah, we do need to move on. Go ahead, Josh.
Just to say real brief, I would love to say in, in two years from now, I'd love to come back, have you all back here, and I'd love to come back from a Mako summer conference weekend and see how you all were presenting there for being the absolute best in the state. I would love for you to continue to dive into looking for systems for efficiency. I mean, you always do a great job, Jennifer especially, you know, you guys do a really amazing job. But I would, I would love to see you guys continue to elevate to be the best and, you know, and all around, in all, in all parts. You know, we may have our history, but I think we've got a really strong future, and I think you guys can really help get us there. So I want you to be the inspiration for the rest of the state, and I hope you, anything I can do to help make that happen up there. Thank you.
John's giving me the evil eye. When we talk about the tipping fees over the coming months, are, are we involving the large users of the landfill and getting their input and all that?
I realize we're running out of time, and, and I'll just skip to it quickly and run through it. So the very last, I think the very last slide is, is a slide about a fall workshop we're plan, planning on.
Okay.
We don't have a date for it yet, but we wanted to do a formal advertisement and hold it at the Civic Center. And this would, the purpose of this really is to invite the public, solicit them, record who attends, record their comments, and take those, those comments to heart where, where they can be used productively and, you know, realize, well, we'll probably get all kinds of feedback. But I think part of the reason that people maybe get disappointed or surprised, first of all, is they're not being told, and so we'll, we'll perform an extra effort to make sure people are told. But we also want to educate them on what it takes to turn the lights on every day out there, and many people don't know a whole lot about that.
Thank you. I got to choose carefully here. Would there be a possibility, I see we have some open positions at Public Works, some of which have been open for a while. Would there be a possibility in light of the trash on our roadways that we're all well aware of? Could we convert one of those positions into a? Could we convert one of those positions into a litter pickup position and possibly working with the city to get a corresponding position on the city side and we could all work together to clean up our roads?
Well, we do have two employees currently that are full time, and they, they do a lot of different things, but they do trash, roadside trash cleanup, more of the big stuff. And of course, Rhodes does as well. If there's a big pile of something, they will go pick it up. I can't speak for the city, and if we had someone designated just to that, I'm sure it would help, but... So we do have people on board to try and keep things clean, but I don't know that you're ever going to eliminate completely the roadside trash as long as it's just an easy thing for people to do. And unfortunately, a lot of what ends up on the road are alcohol-related containers, and that's a whole nother subject.
Our ball for the win.
Yes, you know.
Yeah, just for everybody that's listening, we have 700 miles of roads, so it's, as Jen said, it's a lot to clean up, but thank you.
What I would ask, and I know you, you guys have very valuable time and you, you can most rather probably be on the job than in here, and we appreciate it. But it's very interesting what we're reviewing. I know that Ms. Albarro hasn't had a chance to finish what she wanted to discuss on the recycling. We're very interested in the litter collection program and your 10-year plan, plan we haven't gotten to. So if we could, we would like to reschedule at your convenience.
Sure.
Do a reschedule because I don't want us to be pressured as to what our timeline, timeline is and our timeframe. I want to be able to delve into it properly, and I think it'd be a more effective use of your time as well if we could, if we could reschedule.
Is that something we would hold in an open session and in conjunction with?
We would do the same thing we're doing now. We would sort of continue with what you had here, but give us another chance to, you know, to delve into it a little more in depth.
Absolutely.
So if you don't mind, we'd really appreciate that.
Okay.
Any wrapping? I'll give you more time than I gave Jeff, but if you'd like to wrap up with anything before you, before we follow, finish.
I really have nothing further. I mean, I'm, I was glad to be able to have the opening to say that we plan to do the workshop and we're, we're in the middle of planning that, and the 10-year plan is, is something that's currently under renewal, so.
Okay, I'm glad we scheduled it because it's, it's been very beneficial. So thank you all very much for coming in.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks. Good seeing you.
Thank you all. Going to take a recess for about 15, 20 minutes, if you don't mind. Tony, entertaining motion to sort of recess.
Second.
Thank you. We're reconvenienced the Waco County Council Legislative Session 2024-19 for August 20th, 2024. Next item on the agenda for our work session is the priority letter for the Maryland Department of Transportation. If you could let us know, let the public know from your left or right, I know you've already done it before, but if you can do it again, it'd be great. Thank you.
Heather Langford, Public Works Engineering.
Mike Swaby, Public Works.
Tony Rudy, Airport.
Thank you, good to have you here. If you'd like to start, if you'd like to begin, that'd be fine.
Sure. So the document itself consists of the priorities representative across the county. Tony and I chatted outside. He, he's prepared to go first and share the airport priorities with you first, and then I'll follow up with the road priorities.
So you don't want to go in chronological order?
I think the airport ones are first.
Airport is first, okay, thank you. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Airport's first.
Leave me alone. All right, that's great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rudy.
So, good afternoon. Not a whole lot has changed since last year. I did add two new items, but I'll just, I'll just start, go down the list very briefly. We kept on the runway extension construction. The project is, still has not started. We're hoping in the next few weeks that will get going, but we did keep that on the list. Nothing has changed in that project. Number two, the runway rehabilitation. That, that is in our CIP. We plan on doing this construction after the runway extension is done. The, the last extension that, that was done on the runway, 1,200 feet, that pavement is getting old. It's starting to show some signs of wear, so now is the time to look at that, to plan a rehabilitation project for that section of the runway. Next is the aviation fuel farm. That actually is under construction now for the, the containment area, and we just received bids in for the fuel tanks, so that's an ongoing project. The air traffic control tower upgrade, still an important project for us. The equipment in the tower is, is old and aging. We're, we're concerned about its reliability going forward. We have been applying for federal grants for replacement systems, but have been unsuccessful so far. And just recently, we applied for another federal bill grant for that project. Next is the technology park fire suppression. About the last piece of infrastructure that we have to build out that technology park is fire suppression for large, large volume buildings that may go over there. So we're keeping that project on the priority list. Number six is a new one. Right now, we are constructing our combination operations, maintenance, and aircraft rescue firefighting facility at the airport. And where the fire trucks leave, they have to make either a 90-degree right or left turn. Taxway is 50 feet wide, so it's not extremely difficult for them, but it slows them down making, making their response out of there. So the plan is to make an access road directly across the taxiway for, for a straighter shot out to the airfield to improve response times. So we've added that project on, in this year's version. Next is a taxiway Foxtrot. So this is basically extending a taxiway to bring it down next to our secondary runway, and we'll be able to tie into aprons if we're building future hangars in that area. Next is taxiway Bravo rehabilitation. That's one of our oldest pieces of pavement on the airport, and we've done some crack sealing over the years, but there are some larger cracks in there. Nothing unsafe yet, but the asphalt has deteriorated to the point where it's, it's going to need to be fixed in the next few years. And then lastly is airline and FBO hangar. We've looked at this for years. We, we have a few different ideas, but something is going to have to be done with, with Piedmont Airlines in the future and, and also a more modern fixed-based operator. They are the folks that handle the transient aircraft and do the fueling. And those are the, those are the airport projects, if anyone has any questions.
Can you say more is going to need to be done with Piedmont Airlines? What were you suggesting?
Well, eventually, they're going to be, probably by the end of the decade, they're planning on moving to a different aircraft type. It'll be larger, it'll have a higher tail height, and then they won't be able to fit into the hangars currently. We've been working with them. Dave Reinwood-Swett has also been working with them to find out what their needs are and, and how, how either Piedmont or how the county can help finance this. We, I know Dave's been talking with, with Medco as a possible finance solution for this, so those discussions are kind of ongoing, but it's definitely going to be a need to keep Piedmont here in the future.
Hey, Tony?
Good afternoon. Heather and I are here today to present the Roads Division priorities. Beginning on page four in the book, there are some past priorities that you have previously reviewed and approved to be handed off to MDOT. So really, there's an addition of three new priorities with this, this edition of the book. And there are all three of them are bridges, and they can be found also on page four of the book. The three bridges are Three Bridges Over Burnt Mill, Twelley's Bridge over Nassau Wango Creek, and the Waste Gate Road over Nassau Wango Creek. So just a little bit of detail about each one of those.
Why, why is the state having anything to do with the county roads, bridge?
I can jump in, I was going to let him finish, but when we had to submit for our bridge reports, when we had discussions with that department, if this was not in this letter, we cannot get the funding or the 80/20 or even the 100% coverage.
All right, okay.
In addition to that, and I just didn't get that far yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, interrupted you. But you skipped something that I wanted to ask. You need to go down the numbers.
I'm sorry?
It'd be good if you go down the numbers. You're skipping, you're skipping, you skipped.
US Route 13.
He skipped the US 13 Truckway Station because he was getting to the new projects.
Right, the, the ones that are before the three bridges have already been reviewed and approved by you all in the, in the past edition of this. I can go through them if?
Well, I mean, there's citizens watching us. I mean, I'm sure they would like to, you know. Yeah, if you, if you don't mind.
No, not at all.
Yeah.
You're more familiar with those than I am. So if you don't mind, I will do the bridges because I have the detail on those.
Sure.
Thank you.
I can run down each of them, and then if you have a question after each of them.
That would be good, because, you know, we're on TV and some of the council members here may not have seen them before or whatever, yeah.
So the first one would be US Route 13 and Truckway and Inspection Station for a relocation. Any questions or comments on that one?
Other than the fact that it's been on there for like 10 or 12 years and nothing's ever happened.
Correct.
If, if they try to expand it, the neighborhoods are going to be very upset, so it'd have to be moved to some other location.
Location, correct.
We've fought that battle two or three times over the past 20 years. Okay.
And Mr. Sveby said, then there's two, three, and four, which are the, which are the bridges, and he has a little more information on.
Thank you, Heather. The, the impetus for actually making these a new priority set forth, what is the annual bridge inspection program? And some of the things observed here went into, you know, the scope of work we're, we're suggesting and looking for funding assistance from the state on. So Three Bridges Over Burnt Mill Branch, there are some things identified, conditions, the physical conditions of that bridge through the inspection program. We're going to require some technical assistance to have a design to meet local, state, and federal bridge regulations to bring the actual physical structure up to meet those standards. On Twelley's Bridge over Nassau Wango Creek, also part of the inspection program, that one is going to require a full engineering study, identifying also estimated construction costs for a full replacement. In addition, we're going to be requesting, requesting funding to complete previously started remediation phases, including but not limited to an existing roadway alignment and some structural upgrades. And then finally, the Waste Gate Road over Nassau Wango Creek. The inspection revealed some deficiencies that require a replacement design of some of the components of the entire structure, including five bridge culverts, embankment remediation, roadway encroachment, and post-adjustments. There's pictures of those three structures on page 12 of your booklet.
At, at what point, like Waste Gate Road, which is culverts there, right, pipes, I guess you call them? At what point, when it comes to the size, it's because we have hundreds of pipes across roads in this county. In this situation, we have big pipes like we have at Merritt Mill. At what point does it, what size do they have to be before they become under state jurisdiction or federal jurisdiction? Is it a 12-inch pipe and then an 18-inch pipe, it steps up, or is it a 24-inch pipe? Where, where does it change? Because we don't go to the federal government for the small pipes or the state for the small pipes, but here you're going to the state and federal government for the large pipe. So somewhere between a 12-inch pipe and a three-foot pipe, there's a...
I don't necessarily think it's the pipe. I think it's where there's the height of the deck of the road. That's when it becomes a bridge which falls under the state and, and there...
Pipe has a size, has the size of pipe defines how high the road will be, right?
Correct. So, or even a box culvert. Either, either way, the amount of cover that's over it, it's all very dependent. Obviously, they needed a lot more flow and they couldn't do the box culvert, I'm assuming. So that's why there's five larger culverts in here. And maybe that's something that down the road, instead of the adjustments of the culverts, that we just do a box, one large box.
There was a bridge there until a few years ago, then they changed it to pipes.
And, and again, we may be able to go back and look at the engineering and why they did it, if the flow was too fast, if it was clogging, if there were fish spawn, you know, there's all of those things that have to be reviewed and take a lot longer if you want to make the adjustments, like a five-year study for the fish species and the spawning versus culverts. And on addition, in addition to that, when you're looking for funding and grants, the 100% studies or payments of the grants, some of the studies in the culverts are, are paid 100% by the state, so we could probably maybe, might have leaned that way.
One of the things that bothers me a little bit about seeing this on here now, and I mean, we're all, we're always looking for improvements, but you just paved the road. So, and so now you're looking to tear the road up again, so anyway.
I agree. We, we do yearly bridge assessments, and once they pass a threshold, that's when we have to put it forward. And this year, when we sat down and had a meeting with them, they made it clear it's getting harder to get funding, so you have to put your top, whatever number it's under, if it's under poor conditions, and these three would fall under the poorer conditions, so.
Thank you.
As you know, we, we also reach out to municipalities and jurisdictions that also give what they want to see in the transportation letter as well. So we also have the Salisbury Bypass Feasibility Planning Study, which includes US Route 15 eastbound and westbound access Salisbury Bypass, and the Salisbury Bypass westbound access northbound US Route 13.
I said that, three or four years ago, we started with this.
Okay.
Because the ingress and egress is terrible. It was almost like it was an afterthought, but they said, let's just get the bypass. We don't care how you get on or off, let's just get you a bypass. It's been a nightmare ever since, so they keep, as is, as is, I mean, they keep pushing it down and pushing it down, so we'll have to see, but it's good to see it still on there because I think it's important.
Is this, is this including the area there by the, by the ball stadium? Does this, it doesn't seem to, and I brought this up at prior meeting. We were having, and for whatever reason, years ago, they had, you know, they had a, a ramp to get on the bypass going south at that location. They changed it. Now people have to make a left turn, or if you're going north, you have to make a left turn, and that's creating a lot of accidents there. You know, that intersection has gotten busier over the years. I don't know whether we can, are we allowed to include anything in this letter?
Yeah, we've done it before, you can suggest.
Yeah, I mean...
Isn't that the one, Joe, that says US Route 50 eastbound and westbound?
That's what I'm wondering. I was looking at this.
That's what that is. That's, that's the one button near the ballpark.
Yeah, yeah, it's, does that include the one near the ballpark?
That would be it.
I actually had a, had a meeting with a state official, probably.
Yes, one B.
Pardon me?
If you look here, that, that is where you're talking about. That's where you cross it and turn left, yeah.
Well, they did, they did have, they did have on and off ramps there before they, you can still see them where they were in the trees. I mean, why they ever changed that, I don't know, but they've, they've created a real nightmare there. So, anyway, okay.
Salisbury Pa, Salisbury Bypass Feasibility Study, again.
Oh, one and the same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
State Route 12, Snow Hill Road and Nutter's Crossing Road Intersection, Intersection Safety and Traffic Signal Warrant Study. This would be consideration to conduct an Intersection Safety and Traffic, Traffic Signal Warrant Analysis Study at the intersection of Maryland 12 and Nutter's Crossing Road.
And that's been on there for 10 or 12 years too, so.
I know this was brought up earlier, Barron Creek Road, Design Alternatives and Assistance. Spring of 2015, portion of the earth and dam in Barron Creek were compromised during a significant rain event. Substructures were washed away, so we were looking at some solutions. I know recently at Mako, myself and Mr. Nguyen spoke to the local rep and had some discussions about this particular project and a few more, so be happy to answer anything on this.
I see, didn't, didn't a lot of, wasn't there a lot of attention not to replace this bridge?
It's gone back and forth and back and forth, I think. There's been, there's been arguments of buses, there's been arguments of emergency services getting, getting there. There's been arguments that there's more crashes going around a different location. Now there's arguments that there's safety issues if it's not a bridge. It's, it's sort of a catch 22.
It's not the first time it's washed out. It mentioned here the spring of 2015, but literally only a couple of years before that. It mentioned here the spring of 2015, but literally only a couple of years before that it had washed out, and we'd spent a god-awful amount of money trying to fix it. So I just don't see there's any situation where that continues to exist without us putting, you know, an obscene amount of money into it. I think four should be struck personally, but that's just me.
And I concur. I concur. I agree.
Can I say one, one thing about that? That we were talking to the local S H A representative, and we're trying to see if that could fall under the bridge program to see if we could get that 80/20 or that 100% possibly as a grant in lieu of it coming out of county spending and budgets.
I mean, either way, to me personally, I would just say, but it feels like a waste of money, and you've got spaces not that long, you know, not that far on either side that you can go to. You know, it's just, it's an awkward spacing as far as, you know, no one's going to drive an ambulance there and then do a U-turn and come back around. It's just, I don't know, it doesn't seem to make sense. I thought that even as a child, you know, 35 years ago. It's, it still seems to be like it's not a great, you know, investment for the county, I would say.
President, could we do a consensus vote on that and see?
We could. But first, I'd like to address one other issue, Shane. Thanks. You had mentioned that putting this as a, as a bridge. I, I think that's where you're heading anyway, because the way it's now, the way it's all designed yet, I haven't, I haven't been there personally in a long time, but as much as it's been washed out, and they keep, the first thing they were talking about, we're going to have to have fish ladders, you're going to have to have everything else installed. So I think the bridge may be the solution to that. What were you suggesting that we would do as a county in this report? Would we amend this to, to put it in a category as a bridge? Or what do you suggest? Because you're saying there's an 80/20 on that?
It would fall under the bridge category than it would. And I've tried to have that discussion. I've had one private sit-down and discussion to see where it would fall under. And we actually just had a meeting recently where we could probably get about 100% grant on something called, I think, the conduit grant that allows them to study, you know, would the conduit work versus now we need to put a bridge and our deck height will be high enough for it to be, you know, counted as a bridge. Honestly, the fish, the fish ladder is dammed up now. So there's a, there's a lot of back and forth argument of what held us back before from just completely going through with the plans as design versus where we're at now. So if it does fall under the bridge category, then I do believe, once it starts in that reporting cycle, then we have the ability to treat it the same as, you know, I think three bridges we're currently working on the past few years with the 80/20 split.
We have two options.
I think it's going 75/25 right now, sorry. I think they just made an adjustment, but either way.
We have two options then. We would have one, to eliminate it completely, or the other one would be to ask that it does be, or put, I guess, amended so that it is put under the category of looking to get a bridge put there as opposed to investing, personally investing in the actual road itself. Any, any thoughts on that?
I'd rather see them put the money in the other half a dozen intersections in that corridor that are, people are getting hurt and killed at. This road's been closed for eight years. Nobody's missed it.
I agree with Jeff.
I agree with Jeff also.
Yeah, I...
Minus Mr. Atkins, no, no. But I can't go anywhere in Mardele where people don't say, when's the bridge coming back? So you do what you want. You vote the way you want, Jeff. It's your district.
Yep.
And...
Say what you thought.
Oh, boy. This thing's been a fight ever since, you know, the bridge washed out and I can't swim and my baby's on the other side. I think they had a road, a song like that or something. But anyway...
Can you sing it?
You don't want to hear me sing. But anyway, it's, what are we trying to do? Just take the, take that out?
And, I mean, it could always be under reconsideration later to be reintroduced as a, as a bridge. No sense in doing it this year because I don't think they're going to see that as a priority right now.
And taking it out, may move something else further up the list we want done, you know, yeah. Take it out as far as, for now.
So take it out and put Old Railroad Road and Route 50 in there. Make that a priority where they just had a major accident four days ago. And again...
Got it.
There is a consensus to do that.
Next is the Port of Salisbury, correct?
Yes. Number five is Port of Salisbury Study. Port of Salisbury is Maryland's second largest in significant economic assets of the region and looking to enhance that.
Question about Salisbury.
Shane. Shane, put your mic up.
The Port of Salisbury, they're planning to do something at the North Prong, and they, they just brought back the grain for Purdue and, because Purdue had moved because they knew, they were talking about not even raising the bridges up and maybe having the barges go further down Wycomical River. So I would check with the city of Salisbury, see what their plans are for the North Prong, which is between Isabella, you know, Isabella Street's side, because I know they're buying properties now.
I think I've sat in a few discussions.
Yeah, I would, I would check with them with that. And the Port of Salisbury, they're getting ready to build luxury apartments on one of the lots next to Brew River. Next to Brew River, so I'm quite sure they don't want to see barges coming down their place, you know.
Excuse me. Number six is West Side Collector Phase Three. County requests state consideration and construct, conduct stormwater analysis and feasibility study for Phase Three of the West Side Collector Road from Crooked Oak Lane to Love and Shield Road. We have gone through Phases One and Two. The design is complete except for the, when the design was done, it did not take into consideration the new stormwater regulations that are in place. So that would be the feasibility study that we would have to complete. Any questions?
Have a question. We usually have a meeting with the transportation folks. Has that been set up yet?
Yes.
Yeah, if you give me a second, I can...
That's fine.
Look up the date for you.
I don't need the date. I just wondered if it had been set up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Number seven is Maryland 349 and Nanticoke Road Drainage Improvement Studies. Last several years, northeast, east portion of the US has seen an increase in size of frequency large rain events, not associated with hurricanes and other unnatural disasters. This has caused more frequent flooding along Maryland 349 Corridor. Looking to do drainage improvement studies and determine the best way to convey that runoff. Next are pedestrian improvements. The first one being sidewalk improvements. This will be to ensure safe and connected network of sidewalks between existing residential neighborhoods and major activity generators, including but not limited to schools, places of worship, commercial and retail areas, recreational amenities, et cetera. County has requested S H A to evaluate these opportunities. Due to increased pedestrian activity along US Route 13, Commercial Corridor, north of bypass, the installation of the additional street lighting, audible, and countdown pedestrian signal, crosswalks and other pedestrian amenities are requested for the intersections of Naylor Mill Road, North Point Drive, Daggsboro Road, and Conley Mill Road. Additionally, installing and raised medians and fence to prevent mid-block pedestrian crossings along US Route 13 Business between East Ming and Church Street. Questions?
Yeah, you know, you know, I'm not a real fan of those. I'm not going to block any of this. I mean, this is specifically, I think, what Salisbury generated, but I'm not a real fan of those fences that go along Route 50 like that at all. One example was at night when there was a golden retriever who'd obviously gotten on Route 50 and literally couldn't cross and was forced to walk through traffic down, not knowing where he was going. And I don't think, I don't know if they took that into consideration. Fortunately, people had, it stopped all the traffic and nobody tried to move forward, but that was a rude awakening. I'm not a real fan of those fences at all. So that's, that's my two bits. I don't know. I'm not saying to remove it. No.
Anybody else?
I'd, of course, just add into that, that's part of that Vision Zero and that larger, you know, stuff. Like Ocean City, you've seen they put a lot of those same fences in just because they're trying to cut down the folks running across there. But yeah, they don't, in my view, they don't really look all that great, but, and I don't know how much they stop, but yeah.
I think they have gates, though, don't they?
That's a good question.
I don't know if they do.
At Ocean City, not in Salisbury.
Well, they have stoplights, and then you can take the crosswalk.
Yeah.
You're talking about the ones that go right between Coastal Highway?
Yeah.
For the safety of children.
So.
They did it for the safety of the kids leaving school because the school, the children just go across the street any kind of way. They, they don't follow the stoplight, even with the people, what do you call them, crossing guards?
Yeah.
They don't even go that way. They just cross over. I think that was the issue at that.
You can go into municipal requests. Do you, okay, okay. City of Salisbury, please see the attached letter and exhibit, City of Salisbury regarding requested improvements.
I don't know what it is. Is she looking for it?
Yeah.
The roundabout.
Oh, there's several. You're right.
Yeah, the roundabout.
I think it's in the back here.
My, my part of town. Jersey Road and Naylor Mill Road.
There are several, not...
They, they want a roundabout, which it really needs a stoplight.
Oh, here it is. Yep. So the first one would be the realignment of US Business 13 and the S-curve, I think that we are all familiar with, geometric and safety improvements for that. So that's their first request. The second one is the conversion of US 13 Business to a Boulevard, including landscape medians. Conversion of city's primary corridor to the context-appropriate urban Boulevard included traffic calming, pedestrian scaling, scaled lighting, improved bike and walk facilities, and installation of landscape median systems from West, or from Zion Road to West College Avenue.
I think in respect to what the city's requesting, it's not going to be the county's position to intercede at all.
Sure.
They have their own council that can address those issues and decide what they like. So if you want to, in the light of saving time, I think we could probably move beyond this.
Skip.
That's my feeling, yeah.
I agree.
I think so.
Mr. President, just make one acknowledgement. I've tried to find it through here, reading through the pieces, but the Route 13, I sent an email about it today to the county executive's office, but they, you know, a lot of those signals that are all up and down, like the one on College Avenue does not work. And I have, we have, I have multiple quadriplegic individuals that, that do use that on their, with part of their mobility scooters. And then the one that's adjoining that on the opposite side, on South Boulevard, also is, they built it so that you, a person with disabilities can't reach it. You have to go up on a concrete pad on a 90-degree, a 90-degree jump. It's just physically impossible for someone who's in a wheelchair to access it. But those really do need to be addressed, and they're literally not working now. And there's nothing, there's basically nothing from the other side of the college all the way to Acme that anyone can even cross legally without running across. Right now, that's what they've been doing for the last month and a half, is just running across the road.
Yeah, I think farther down we get into some of that.
Yeah, I trust you in adding that in there or doing whatever, but that, that really is a critical issue right now.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anybody else?
So that would, that would move us down. We have the Town of Delmar. Any specific things with anybody? With the Town of Hebron, the only thing I would suggest, and I don't think that's what this is referencing, but I know there was a study done, a preliminary study done at Old Railroad Road and Route 50 where Wright's Market is. And I think, I don't think that's been resolved. So I think we should put this in here as a priority, but you would need a little more information, and I'm afraid I don't have it. But I think you need a little more information as to what the circumstances are, because they were talking about a J-turn, which isn't going to work. But I think we need to make sure we pay attention to the dynamics of that, James.
I was, I actually met with MDOT a little bit at Mako, and we did talk about this. And I did stress onto them how this is a priority, the priority for the county. And I did, Heather was there as well. I don't know if you want to, if you know any more details, but I know that...
So the issue that they're having right now is there were two options presented to them. One argument was line of sight or vision. Another one was, you know, it took stormwater and there were easement issues. One would not allow funding if it were to be a, a light. However, they're all lights the whole way down, so, you know, weighing out your, your financial portions, there, there weren't enough crashes to support that. So...
Have somebody hurt bad through...
Right.
So, yeah. We have to wait for something bad to happen.
I think it would be a good idea, maybe, for us to, if, if everyone's okay with it, to have a letter wrote to MDOT saying how important this is.
I, I understand your point, and I agree with you 100%, but I think we need to possibly reach out to the Town of Hebron.
Yeah, absolutely.
And get them to maybe initiate a letter.
Right.
And then send it to us, and we can, if, if they do send us a letter, are we in agreement to go ahead and add it to here?
Yeah.
And maybe put it on. I'd also like to know from Hebron whether it would be the first priority, or it would be number three now, but they may want it to be number one.
Do you, who do you want to reach out to them? Do you?
Sure.
Sure.
Mark Crampton in the Town Hall indicated that funding for traffic lights comes out of a different account than funding for J-turns. Why that is, you know, don't know. But the signal analysis has been completed. We're just waiting on the results, and then I guess that's the next step.
I'd like to know if they will hold a public hearing at their Town Hall in reference to this. I don't know if they will. They put it on here, whether it might require a public hearing. I don't know.
This kind of mirrors the Pittsville, Pittsville issue. And they had, they had two or three public hearings down that, on that, so.
So my question also would be, will we have it in a time? I'm not quite sure with the purpose of this letter, is it formally presented at this dinner?
No, it's sent before the dinner.
It's sent before the dinner, so I don't know what our timeframe is. We may have to, we may need to know. This may be, may be a real rush on the part of Hebron.
They do do a PowerPoint presentation that evening, but I don't know that they're going to hit all of these at that dinner meeting.
Just, I guess, just to touch base with Hebron, see where they are with that and to try to expedite it, if they could expedite it, if they want it.
That meeting, just so you guys know, is going to be September the 17th at 6:00.
Their Hebron meeting?
No, no, no. Pre-tour.
Dinner. Morning or at night?
At night, 6:00.
I would, I would say the executive should reach out to, to the president of the Hebron Council.
Might be best, courtesy.
Mike, what do you, what do you think about adding one to the list? Wallston Switch Road, which is a collector road from 346 to 50, and then from 50 to Mount Herman Road, which is what, 353, I think? That's Mount Herman Road. Ask the state whether they will want to assume that due to the fact that it's a collector road. I mean, we've got a lot of commercial on that road, especially at 50. Might take, might take some, I don't know, what, what's the process?
You're asking for the new, a new road to be put in, correct?
Pardon me?
Are you asking for a new road or for just the...
No, that road that's there.
To re...
For the state to take that on as a state road.
Oh, take it on.
So they, so they would be responsible for maintenance and, it's a collector road, I mean, a connector road, not collector, connector road, because it connects, it connects actually three state roads. Mount Herman Road, Old Ocean City Road, and Route 50. So it's actually connects three state roads.
I don't know if this would fall under us putting it in this document or if it would be a separate discussion.
Well, I'd see, we've got Willards in here asking them to...
To take on.
Bent Pine Road between Ocean City Road and Route 50.
Yeah.
That's, we've got consensus from the council, I guess, or can anybody ask for anything to be done? I mean...
346 and Mount Herman.
Well, we would have nothing to lose to do it, right?
Pardon me?
We would have nothing to lose to do it.
Yeah.
But is, is this the right vehicle to address that?
That's what she's saying, but someone, another entity's doing the same thing, so...
That's what she's saying, but someone, another entity's doing the same thing, so.
They are.
Do we know why the town of Willards is requesting that?
They've had, that road is used, Bent Pine Road between, well, you'd live on that road, between 50 and 346, it's used, it's, it's a connector road.
Yeah.
You know, and, and it's not very narrow, I mean, not very wide, and they would like to get it widened, but they've never been able to do it, and they think the state could probably, they've asked for this for years, you know, so, the county, they finally got it paved a few years ago. By the way, I see you got your road paved the other week, good job.
Just a piece of it.
So, we're going to, we're going to add it on.
Anyway.
Got jokes, Jeff.
This Wallston Switch Road, it's between 346 and 50, and between 50 and Mount Herman Road.
Okay with that?
Yeah. And if, you know, the state took it off of VAX, because it is a, it's a connector road, it's used, you know, not just by county residents, especially where they go off of 50 to the airport, you know, and the airport's getting really busy, so.
That's, that's good, okay.
Where am I at? Okay. Town of Pittsfield, you guys want to go over anything, or take a review of? Town of Willards?
New, correct?
They are requesting state highway administration to take the ownership between Bent Pine Road and?
That's new. I got it as new. I have it as new, but that's okay. Public school, college, and university?
She is requesting visibility enhancement for existing bike and right turn lanes along U.S. Route 13 extended from College Avenue to K Avenue.
Any questions on the five items listed for the public, for Salisbury University? What about Warwick Community College? An access management study?
That's been there for years, they've, you know, they've never done anything with it.
Did you all have anything else that you wanted to added, add, or any recommendations or thoughts?
Just the three bridges is what we add, but.
Everything's clear? Okay, all right.
I just had, just one other thing, I didn't quite understand whether it's going to fit into the, the cities of Salisbury's or the colleges, but, but basically, I mentioned, just mentioned the College Avenue and Route 13 for those light signals. Also, on that, they, they've been, the college has been talking about, they, right now, because of where the railroad comes across, you, there's no, the space is basically broken to try to have a ramp, a wheelchair ramp going down the sidewalk, so the sidewalk basically breaks in between there, so I wasn't sure, it wasn't clear in this piece whether that was fitting in there, but I know the colleges have expressed issues with that, and then I know that that's an issue with mobility, so, yeah.
The college has put a few different adjustments to, to be able to assist with a lot of that. One of them is, is the pedestrian crosswalks, the lighting that goes in there, the ADA compliant ramps. There's actually an underground tunnel that they're proposing in one location, and another one is an over, or an above-ground walking path above traffic, and a bridge for pedestrians to cross. And in regards to the signals, city of Salisbury is trying to read time and re-signal all of those SHA lights as well, so.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, could I?
Yes, Bob.
This is a, in the, on the first page, under Salisbury, city of Wycomico Regional, this is not exactly a major issue, but it says, "As the only commercial service airport in the Eastern Shore of Maryland, as proud residents of the Eastern Shore, we capitalize the Eastern Shore," so maybe we could capitalize the Eastern Shore in that letter.
I don't think that's insignificant at all, Bob, I think that's a hot word.
Thanks.
It's a major point.
Sure, bro.
Thanks.
Strong work.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it. Good day for you, now.
Thank you all.
Next item we have is tax exemption from Bennett Airfield.
Good afternoon, Pam Oland, Finance Director.
Kyle Kineman, Bennett Airport.
We are coming forward to council, there is a grant program available to airports in the state of Maryland that are not basically BWI and the Salisbury-Wycomico Regional Airport, but to qualify, these airports must have the ability to have the area around their runway basically be declared tax exempt. Mr. Kineman has approached the executive's office and requested that this happen. To accomplish this, council has to patch legislation to allow for the area around the runway to be considered tax exempt. They do meet all of the requirements of what the state has stated as to what areas, what airports in the state of Maryland are allowed to have this, so this is the only other airport, I believe, in Wycomico County that would have this availability. Currently, the area, the whole property, we collect $1,150 in taxes. We would not be excluding all of that $1,150, but we have not started the process to work with the State Department of Assessment to evaluate, because if the council has no interest in this concept, then it is work on multiple different people without any benefit. What this does is it allows Mr. Kineman to apply for state grants to help with capital costs associated with maintaining his airport. And so, again, we're requesting council allow legislation come forward to basically exempt right around the airstrip.
Any questions, anybody?
So, you can know, basically, how much of a discount, property tax discount he'll be getting?
I, I, I do not have?
Less than $1,150.
It would be less than $1,150.
I've done the homework myself, and I'm at less than $200. The way that I'm taxed and the way that things have been drawn out, I'm sorry, I've been working on this and been busy, but.
That's fine.
If you all like copies of these, I can explain.
No, that's fine.
You may, you may be including that in the legislation, I'm assuming.
Well, we would include, basically, the legislation would have this as an attachment, it wouldn't go in the legislation, there is state law, the state actually, in their document, and I, which I provided to you, gave, recommended language for this tax exemption, so it wouldn't require a lot of legal time to create the tax exemption, I think the biggest legal aspect would be to figure out where the best place it would go in, in our charter code, so, but if he's done the calculation, then he would then take this information, we could show, we could add this as an attachment showing what approximately we feel is going to have happen when the assessment office works with him to finalize that breakdown.
Everybody good with this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Very good.
One, one quick question. You say this is the only place in Wycomico County, has it been done elsewhere in Maryland? Do you know?
I do not know, but again, the state, so, the, the steps that we, we took is, I worked with, actually, Tony Rudy, to get a contact with the state to find out if they met the definition of a state airport, and they do. So, they meet the definition of a, basically, necessary airport within air traffic within the state of Maryland. So, they meet that part of the definition, so then the next step is to get this legislation passed, so that then next spring, hopefully, he can apply for one of the grants.
From the cutting edge.
I was going to say, we're groundbreaking.
So, if, if council is okay, then I will work with legal to get the legislation written up. As it is legislation, it will have to have two readings and a public hearing.
Sounds good.
I will keep you informed to those dates.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
Next item?
Next item is Wycomico County Economic Impact Scholarship to be discontinued, this is an interesting one.
Yes, it is.
So, again, Pam Oland?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Sont, Vice President for Administrative Services, Warwick Community College.
So, Warwick approached the county and requested, there is basically $51,000 as of June 30th still sitting in the, at the Community Foundation of Eastern Shore for the Wycomico County Economic Impact Scholarship. This scholarship was created in 2016. This scholarship was created before the state scholarship for community colleges. That state scholarship has made this scholarship not used. We have not used this, since I have taken over the job in four years, there has never been an application, because the requirements for the state one are, in some ways, even better than what we had. So, these funds are just sitting there, not being utilized, and so, what Warwick had requested to us is that, let's shut down, the council, the council years ago gave these funds to be utilized by Warwick to help them for scholarships. Well, what they'd like to do is repurpose the funds, yes, it would be a one-time thing, it would be repurposing the funds to help take the load off of their budget this year for two products, one called Brain Fuse and one called Better Mind, they are products that they already have, so it's not adding new products, but what it would do is it would take it out of their operating costs for this fiscal year, allow them to utilize those funds to help the students in the ways that have been described in the memo.
Everybody okay with this?
Yep.
We good?
Okay. Next, next thing I will do is I will work with legal to figure out how we shut it down, because I don't know exactly what that step is, so my guess is, is that, because I know of a lot of things that I have on my list of to-dos for the next council meeting, it'll probably, I'll be coming back the second meeting in September, because I may not figure all that out in enough time to get this on this next agenda, but I am assuming it's a resolution that we will have to pass that says council wants to shut this down, but I also have to call the Community Foundation to find out exactly what they would want from us to be able to shut this down, so I want to make sure that we shut it down appropriately, and that we don't cause ourselves any future liability in any way, so most likely, council won't see this until the second meeting in September, just because of timeframe.
I'm guessing they have a standard release.
I, I am assuming so, but again, because these were given to them, and were earning interest, and they're investing them for us, I want to make sure I follow their procedures as well.
Yeah, sounds good.
Thank you very much.
For the public's knowledge, how much money, it's like fifty-some thousand dollars?
As of June 30th, it was $51,072.82. We've been getting, I've been getting quarterly statements since I've been in the position, I look at them every quarter and throw them in a folder and have that sitting there, but again, there has been, in the four years, there has never been one request.
Yes.
Okay, we will?
We'll get on the schedule whenever you need it.
Okay, we will bring it to you when it is ready, hopefully, before the end of September.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item we have on the agenda is a very, very worthwhile effort in Wycomico County, not effort, but actual program, at Eastern Shore Mission of Mercy Dental Clinic, and we have with us Ms. Susan Simmons and Dr. Roland Holsinger.
Yes, it's a pleasure to be with you.
Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sorry to hold you up.
Yeah, no, it's not a problem. There's plenty of things to do when you're orchestrating organized chaos, there's lots of things on the.
We appreciate you, by the way, taking on the chairmanship, right?
Yes, I am filling big shoes with Sharon DeShields and Wendy Waller, who held this position in 2017 and 19, so, they built a system that we can follow, and I'm grateful to them, and grateful to you all. I don't know if?
Your PowerPoint's on that laptop right there, so if you just give me a second.
All right.
Mr. President, I will mention, of course, just while council's, while we're waiting here, I think at the last meeting that we had, we had, we had learned how incredible James Simmons was doing some great work in the Department of Recreation, and I said, "Well, your legendary mother, Sue Simmons."
This is the Simmons.
This is.
Oh, my gosh, I didn't, I didn't put that together.
You didn't put that together?
No.
This is the legendary individual who continues, I mean, continue, I, I, like, I think to myself, how can Sue Simmons do anything better than what I expect, and then I look at my calendar, like, oh, of course, she's leading one of the best efforts that we have on the entire Delmar Peninsula, so, I'm not surprised, but also glad to have you here.
And Councilman Hastings, I really appreciate your encouragement over the years, because when Dr. Holsinger asked me, when I was a Director of Recreation and Parks myself in Caroline County, when Roland asked me to help, and I was like, ugh, he's written checks for me and my own recreation and parks habit and community organizing in my home county for so many years, it was difficult for me to say no, but I also have been pushing him a lot, there are a lot of things, like, how do we do this, how do we do that, and so, you know, there, I'm, I am sure it's just a question of time before we have not only a dental clinic, but balloon animals and clown noses, you know, who knows, so, but I wanted to call your attention to a couple of things. One, it is coming up on September 13th and 14th, it is open to ages 18 and up, not only patients, but also our volunteers that we recruit. First come, first served, no fee and insurance required, but here's what first come, first served means. This is the line that accumulated in 2019, prior to the clinic actually opening, and folks queue up fairly early, because they want to be sure that they are there, so we are working with Deb Rossi at Hope, I don't know if many of you are familiar with that particular program, so that we can, we can support and engage the patients in positive ways even before they get into the clinic. I actually even confirmed a truckload of watermelon from the Maryland Food Bank, because I figured if you're diabetic, watermelon would be a really tasty treat at four in the morning, or 10:00 in the morning, or whenever, so, we're working on those kinds of things. Laura, there we go, whoops, let me go back, so, let me go back, let me go, what have I done? Here we go.
You went way back.
Okay, so, let's see, from the beginning, let's see, all right.
That's fine.
All right, good enough. In 2019, one of the things that I wanted to call your attention to is at least $1.1 million of dental services were rendered at the Civic Center. We had this many volunteers, 476, 550 medical and clinical volunteers, and that was 10,000 hours of donated services. You can see from the next slide that, Laura, I can honestly say I do not understand this computer. Oh, there we go, right there, okay, 1,100 patients that are served, so, it is a significant effort and an event, and I really would be remiss if I did not use this opportunity to acknowledge a bit about the Civic Center magic. You've got an incredible team at the Wycomico County Civic Center. My son is not an exception in that regard, honestly, the level of support and guidance and encouragement that we've gotten from those folks, from Steve Miller and Chelsea Jones, many of those team members have been extraordinary, and, and I want you to know, you've got some gems there, we're really very grateful to them, yeah. And so, the other thing, you know, the next step is how could you help? Well, you all look like fabulous patient escorts to me, if you wanted to be a part of it, we do have, I would steer you to the Eastern Shore, Mom, I know that Councilman Merritt is already donating discounts to the, some of the printing work that we need to do at that event, and we'll take all the positive energy that we can get, and I don't want to steal Dr. Holsinger's thunder, because Dr. Holsinger's been a part of this event since 2013, so, I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add?
Yes, in 2013, which was our first event, we rent the equipment from this foundation called the Americans Dental Care Foundation, and so, that's where the 100 chairs that you saw in there come from, and all the dental units, and I asked the rep from there, like, well, how does this clinic compare for you, and he said, you know, we do these clinics all over the United States, and there's places where, you know, there's a really a minimal need if they're put on, and then there's places where there's a fairly good need to put on, and then there's places that there's an extreme need, and he said, you know, looking with the procedures that you're doing, this is an area of extreme need. There, in the past, up until 2019, there were pretty much four places in the, in the state of Maryland that have done the Large Mission of Mercy, there's the Eastern Shore, there's Southern Maryland, there's one in College Park at the Xfinity Center, and then... the Xfinity Center, and then in Baltimore. There are smaller ones done in Western Maryland. To give you an idea, at the clinic done on the Eastern Shore in Salisbury, probably nearly 80% of all the patients get an extraction. I mean, there, you know, there's times that you look at the patient's x-ray and you wonder, is there a tooth in that person's mouth that we can save? Comparing that to the ones done at the Xfinity Center, they're doing procedures called CERAX, which are basically single visit crowns. So those, they're very necessary, but that's, those people have teeth that you're trying to preserve. We're just trying to keep people out of the emergency room.
Yeah.
After 13, 15, 17 and 19, PRMCs, dental, dental visits for emergency room go down precipitously in the following six months. This clinic is unique for the state of Maryland in the fact that this is the first large mission of mercy being held in Maryland since COVID.
One of the other things that we do, and I will make sure that I leave this with Ms. Hurley, is we do pre-register veterans on the 12th. So we do have a pre-register. The general public is a first come, first served, but we also try and register about 150 veterans, but we are also partnering, because we're also partnering with other community organizations like Diakonia that also does some veteran advocacy. With Hope, we're looking at working with Healthport and I just had a conversation with Somerset Community Services. So there are plenty of folks, so that we can, when we open the clinic at 7:00 on Friday the 13th, oh, yeah, we, we will have some folks that are already prescreened, that we can go right onto the, the clinic floor. And so if you know folks that are veterans that need some support, we're looking at pre-registering them and, you know, flowing them into the clinic in advance and accommodating them. So really appreciate your attention and, and your, your support directly and indirectly of this particular event in Wycomico County.
Especially for helping us provide with the Civic Center, because the Civic Center is the only place on Eastern Shore that meets the Americans Dental Care Foundation's requirements, because you need a large arena that you can drive a forklift on.
If, if you by chance happen to have a time where you will give tours, I know that there's been some times where they actually give it, prior to an opening, they give a behind the scenes tour to the press, to the media. We certainly would love to be, be able to take advantage of that.
Okay.
Councilmembers can really get an, an idea of the undertaking involved here.
Sure.
It's astronomical what you do with all the piping of the water in and out and the chairs set up. So if that happens, just feel free to let us know.
Okay, I will. I'll coordinate that with you and make sure that, I, I know that, I had a conversation with WMDT this morning, and I know they're planning on coming to the event, but I think we'll also make sure that on Thursday afternoon, when we're going through the, the triage and, you know, we're, we're setting, we're building that clinic floor and we're also doing that pre-screening of veterans and other community neighbors and, and partners that will let you know and invite you.
Great.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thanks so much for your attention.
Ms. Simmons, thank you.
All right.
Dr. Holsinger, thank you as well. Entertaining, much adjourned. All's in favor?
Aye.
Means adjourned.
All right.
Thank you.